Go ahead and call this meeting of the Moberly City Council on order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Hans. Please call the roll.
Lucas.
Here.
Kimmons.
Here.
McEwen.
Here.
Graff.
Here.
Scubick.
Here.
Thank you. You should have all had a chance to read tonight's agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda for this evening? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The agenda has been approved. As with every week, you should have received a copy of the minutes in your packet. Are there any corrections to the minutes received from the last council meeting? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes stand approved as written. Recognition of visitors, Mr. Bogowski.
No visitors this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Just like to remind everybody, if you are here to speak to the council, please come up and see the clerk, Ms. Hans, grab a green card, fill out your name, address, and information, and we will recognize you towards the end of the meeting, and you will have four minutes to address the council. So please see Mrs. Hans, and she'll get you all fixed up if you want to speak towards the end. Public hearing and receipt of bids. Number two. Receipt of, receipt requests for qualifications for grant writing and administrative services for the Grain Tower demolition project. Okay, it looks like we received two bids on this, and we are recommending the approval of... I'm sorry, we're just accepting this proposal. So we have, I'm sorry, we have a motion for the acceptance of this proposal.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The proposal has been accepted. Number three, receipt of a proposal for infill housing at 928 West End Place. Do we have a motion for the receipt of this proposal?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. This proposal has been accepted. Receipt of proposals for five infill houses for Pretz contracting. We went through these in the work session. Do we have a motion for the approval of these five infill houses?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The proposals have been received. Number five, a resolution accepting the bid of Central Bank of Moberly, Missouri for banking services and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for said services. Mr. Bogowski, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Yes, sir. So we discussed this in the work session at the last meeting. We received bids from several local banks, and we were recommending at the work session moving forward with the fixed interest rate depository payment of, from Central Bank of Moberly. So that would be taken up later in the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a motion for the acceptance?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We have accepted the bid. Consent agenda. Consent agenda includes items six through eleven for this evening. These items are considered routine and will be adopted with a single vote. Does any council member wish to remove any of the items for individual consideration? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the reading of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First and only reading, please.
Bill number R-1789, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a letter agreement with Midwest Environmental Consultants Company to upgrade Moberly landfill monitoring wells. Bill number R-1790, a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing contracting with Collins and Herman Incorporated for fabrication and installation of wayfinding signs. Bill number R-1791, a resolution accepting the response of Mark Twain Regional Council of Governments to their request for qualifications for grant writing and administrative services for the Grain Towers demolition project. Bill number R-1792, a resolution approving a new street name and authorizing the erection of a new street sign. Bill number R-1793, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a supplemental agreement, number two, to engineering service contract with Bartlett and West Incorporated for easement acquisition as part of the South Morley Cost Share Agreement between the City of Moberly and the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission. And bill number R-1794, a resolution accepting the bid of Central Bank of Moberly, Missouri for banking services and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for said services.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions regarding the consent agenda for this evening? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor for the approval of tonight's consent agenda signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Moving now on to ordinances and resolutions. Number twelve, an ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance approving a third addendum to intergovernmental cooperative agreement for the operation of a farmer's market at the Fennel complex and providing further authority. Asset that should be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance approving a third addendum to intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the operation of a farmer's market at the Fennel complex and providing further authority.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance approving a third addendum to intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the operation of a farmer's market at the Fennel complex and providing further authority.
Thank you. Any additional discussion or questions? We have a motion for the approval of the ordinance. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubick.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been approved. Number thirteen, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager of Moberly, Missouri to execute a cooperative agreement for the car cruise events at the Fennel complex with Moberly Area Chamber of Commerce and the downtown Moberly Community Improvement District. And I ask that be read twice for consideration.
We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager of Moberly, Missouri to execute a cooperative agreement for car cruise events at the Fennel complex with Moberly Area Chamber of Commerce and the downtown Moberly Community Improvement District.
Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager of Moberly, Missouri to execute a cooperative agreement for car cruise events at the Fennel complex with Moberly Area Chamber of Commerce and the downtown Moberly Community Improvement District.
Last chance, any further discussion or questions? Do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubick.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been approved. Number fourteen, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Spartacus Holdings LLC, Missouri Limited Liability Company. And I ask that be read twice for consideration of passage.
We have a motion for the, for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with, development with Spartacus Holdings LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Any questions from council? Second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Spartacus Holdings LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubick.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been approved. Number fifteen, an ordinance.
Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, Missouri Limited Liability Company. And I ask that be read twice for passage.
Thank you. Do we have a, we have a motion for the, for the reading of the ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from council? Hearing none, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Last chance, any questions or discussion? We have a motion for the approval of the ordinance.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubick.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been approved. A lot of these are all the same, so they're going to sound a little bit redundant. So I'm not repeating myself or going crazy. Number sixteen, an ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, Missouri Limited Liability Company. I ask that be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance? Do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We've got a motion, we've got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubick.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been approved. Number eighteen, are we on eighteen? Seventeen. An ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company. And I ask that be read once for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor for the reading of the ordinance signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Any further discussion or questions from council? Second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubick.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been approved. Number eighteen, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company. And I ask that be read twice for consideration of passage.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubick.
Yes.
All right, the ordinance has been approved. Number twenty, an ordinance. Going to mix it up here on you guys a little bit. Oh, we're not ready for that yet.
One more.
One more, sorry. It's hard to keep track of. An ordinance, sorry.
All right, an ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, Missouri Limited Liability Company. I ask that be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Any additional questions from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Thank you. Any further questions? Do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubick.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been approved. Number twenty, an ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for lease of real estate, of real property with Midwest Custom Trucks LLC. I ask that be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for lease of real property with Midwest Custom Trucks LLC.
Thank you. Any questions from council regarding the lease of real property with Midwest Custom Trucks? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for lease of real property with Midwest Custom Trucks LLC.
Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubick.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been approved. Number twenty-one, an ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing execution of an aviation project consultant supplemental agreement, number one, for construction services with H.W. Lochner, Inc. And I ask that be read twice for consideration.
We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing execution of an aviation project consultant supplemental agreement, number one, for construction services with H.W. Lochner Incorporated.
Any questions or discussion from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing execution of an aviation project consultant supplemental agreement, number one, for construction services with H.W. Lochner Incorporated.
Final chance, any questions from council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Motion, if we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in, or, roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubick.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been approved. Number twenty-two, a resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Moberly, Missouri to pay expenses due between February 28th, 2025, and March 12th, 2025 in the amount of $943,081.61. And I ask that be read once for passage.
Thank you. We have a, a motion for the reading of the resolution. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First and only reading, please.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Moberly, Missouri to pay expenses due between February 28th, 2025, and March 12th, 2025 in the amount of $943,081.64.
And I hereby certify that there is sufficient money standing to the credit of the city of Moberly, Missouri, unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution. City Treasurer Allison Boyd. Have a motion for the approval of the resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Resolution has been approved. Okay, that does it for ordinances and resolutions. Department head, Department Head Monthly Report. So each month, we ask department heads to submit kind of what's happening in their department and what's, anything new that's going on in their reports to the city council. Is there any questions from anyone on the council for any of the department heads for this report?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Tom, with, under the community development, where it looks like for the wayfinding signage, the school is not included in that, is that correct? Am I reading that right? And it sounds like there's, you got future meetings set up to address that.
So we had had several stakeholder meetings and, and other town hall meetings where the wayfinding group came in and had suggestions of where they typically identified for other communities. And with those suggestions, plus the stakeholder list, that didn't come up. I mean, you didn't, but it was, people don't think of that as a tourist destination or something like that. But anyhow, Superintendent is on the tourism board, and she wasn't involved when that stakeholder meeting took over, and she said she'd like to see that in there. We already have a sign that's going to be in place on route on Gratz Brown just a little bit east of Gratz Brown anyhow, that has room on it. So we already made that change, and they gave us the name of how they like to have it on there. So we will have the, it's basically the Moberly School Complex is how it's going to be identified. There are numerous things down that street. And then they're also going to work with our tourists or another community or group to do internal signage as well to identify their facilities as a separate project. So they were, she seemed happy with that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any additional questions from anyone on the council? I had two questions for this month for Mr. Bach at the, at the park. First one had to do with your report. Could you just kind of give us just a quick rundown of where we are with the, the Kiwanis Park and, and where we're at in the construction process and when we may see some, see that completed? And then the other one, I'll just go ahead and ask you. I did get a question from a citizen asking about the fountain at the, the lake in the park. Is that ever coming back, or is that something that's just gone away?
Sure. On the fountain, I'll take the, the last one first. The best we can tell, a couple of years ago, about a year and a half ago, we believe the, rather than vandalism, we believe it was someone's boat prop caught the electrical, and so there's, there's no way to retrofit a new cord to the pump. So we're, we're into the stage of having to have a new pump, or a new fountain. On Kiwanis Park, it'll likely be next week is what we're hearing now from the contractor. I believe the 24th is when they're looking at breaking ground on Kiwanis Park, the playground portion. So that's right around the corner, and they're pretty eager to, to knock it out, and they're planning to be done, done June 1, weather permitting.
Oh, wow. Okay, good. That's good news. Thank you very much. Any additional questions from anyone on council? Okay. Thank you, guys, for taking the time to submit those reports. They're always very handy in keeping us in the know of what's going on. Let's see. Consideration of two appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two open positions on the Historic Preservation Commission, and we had two applicants put their name forward. Mr. Jimmy O'Laughlin has put himself forward to be reappointed to the board, and Libby Maddox has put herself forward to be appointed to the board. This would be her first term. So this was discussed in work session last meeting and was voted to move forward to this meeting.
I think we, we'd asked the question, curious if they were, if they were ones that participated as we were trying to get people on a lot of these boards that, that do contribute, and one being new, the other one, we decided did, did contribute. So do we have a motion for the approval of the two appointments to Historic Preservation Board?
Motion.
Yeah, so a motion, yeah. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor for the approval of the appointments signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, they will be contacted, that they will, been approved for the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, number twa, or twenty-five, consideration of an appointment to the Tourism Advisory Council.
Yes, Mayor, we had an opening on the Tourism Advisory Commission and Johnny Barnett has put herself forward to be reappointed. Uh, she has served on this board in the past and, uh, again, this was discussed at work session last, uh, meeting and was, uh, voted to move forward to this meeting.
Very good. Thank you. I think the same question was asked of her and, uh, she was also one that does participate and, uh, adds some value to that board. So, uh, I would entertain a motion for the approval, uh, of the appointment to the Tourism Advisory Commission.
She'll move.
We got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? She will also be notified that she's been approved for the Tourism Advisory Commission. Okay, coming down to the public comments section. Uh, if you grabbed a green card from the clerk, uh, now would be the, it looks like we do have one. Okay, um, so now would be the time to come on up. You'll have four minutes to address the council. Um, and please state your name and address, please.
My name's Aaron Hess. I'm in the close I D County Road.
Hang on just a second. Make sure your microphone's on. There you go. Thank you, sir.
My name's, you're welcome. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I came here to sit because I was brutally attacked right over here on one hundred East Lee Street in September twenty-second, uh, first of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the police was called. They came to the Moberly Regional Medical Center. They took pictures of my broken clavicle, which the individual, uh, admitted to, throwing me to the gravel. Never once was I never told to leave that property or never come on the property. So God struck me dead. If he did, nobody never told me never come over there. Okay? The man brutally attacked me and injured me. I spoken with Mr. Uh, Thompson concerning his situation at hand, just wants to let it go. I think there should be some answers to it, the way the report was written and then rewritten with the Randolph County Sheriff's Department. I was brutally injured. I was attacked.
So, so what is the, I guess, what is the question? Uh, what do you want from us?
My question is, what went on with the police department over there? Why wasn't there any, uh, questions over there? Why wasn't that man brought in over there? Why wasn't, if they had the report and they read the report, like I stated, that what happened, they'll see.
Okay. Mr. Thompson, would you like to add anything to this or, um?
Sure. I'll give some context of what I understand.
Sure.
This situation is, um, first time I ever talked to Mr. Hess was, I think, in June or July of twenty-four, um, twenty-twenty-four, and it was by telephone.
And I was pretty upset, Mayor.
And he told me that he had been to, uh, he had filed a couple of civil cases on the same fact situation, seeking damages. He was represented by attorneys out of Columbia. And apparently those, both those cases have been dismissed. And Mr. Hess told me that after the second one was dismissed, that, uh, the judge told him to go see me, which is why he called me. So I, um, after talking to Mr. Hess, I contacted the police department and obtained copies of police reports that were done, uh, concerning the incident he's talking about.
And they should read those. I had them present right here in the courtroom.
Let's, let's let him, let's let him finish this.
Yes, sir.
And, um, it was explained to me by the police department that, um, they did investigate. They determined that there was not probable cause to refer it to the county prosecutor for prosecution, and so they did not refer it to the county prosecutor. Um, and he then brought the two civil suits. And he wants me to file suit or bring criminal charges. And, you know, I'm kind of in the same boat. I have two problems with that. One, the police department doesn't believe there's probable cause to establish that a crime occurred. Secondly, the only thing I can do in, in municipal court are ordinance violations. Uh, this is a, this would be considered a misdemeanor. The statute of limitations on ordinance violations for misdemeanor assault is one year. So that statute of limitations would have run in September of twenty-three. So I, I don't have authority to file anything, uh, in city court with respect to the assault that he's talking about.
Okay.
So that's what I know about it.
Sure. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to speak to Mr. Uh, Lucas.
Yeah.
When I was, when I was injured, when the man came to that sit, Moberly Regional Medical Center, Officer Bry that was on duty, he took pictures of my broken clavicle. He noted what was going on, continued to ask me, you want any press charges? You want me picked up? You want me arrested? I, I was very irritated. I was very excruciatingly pain after I was traveling and had to ride in my truck and try to keep the man out of trouble. I didn't want to see the man go to jail. I went to this, uh, ex-defy sheriff of the law, Jacob Holloway Kitchen, right out here that near by me, that dropped me out of the Moberly Regional Medical Center. I told the officer I wanted to arrest him. What they made up over there, what they came up with over there is wrong. Nobody never, ever told me to go there.
Okay. Well, we've got your side of the story and I think we've. Sure, sure. And, and we, we use this, we, we use this forum and unfortunately our four minutes is up. We use this forum for. I understand, but we use this forum for you to kind of tell us your side of the story. There's, can't be any decisions be made. There can't be any, you know, we can't have any, anybody arrested or anything happen at this point. So, uh, we've received your side of the story. I appreciate you coming here and doing that. I know that's not always easy to do. Um, we, we will do a little follow-up, you know, of our own on that. And, uh, does anybody have any additional questions? Okay, well, that's. I understand. I understand. Okay. Well, thank you very much, sir. We do appreciate you coming in. Thank you very much. The, I, we will have to discuss it amongst ourselves and see if there's any, anything that we could even do. Um, I, you know, like the, the attorney has said, it's past the, the.
Well, this, to me, this wasn't, uh, this wasn't in the third degree of soft slap in the face or a black eye or bust a lip with a few stitches. This is a, this is a, this was a, like I told you, it was.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm gonna have to cut you off there, but I appreciate that very much, okay?
So, I mean, how, what's your outcome?
Sir, I'll, I'll contact you.
Thank you very much.
But I'm the one who decides whether or not charges are brought in municipal court. The, the city council is not. So you had an opportunity to express your frustration to the city council. So you've had an opportunity to do that. I'll follow up and talk to you again. Thank you.
Yeah, right. Thank you, sir. Okay. I believe that's all we have. Yep, public comments, that's all we have for the, for the evening. Is there anybody, anything else to come before the council? Anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Nope. Okay. I consider a motion to adjourn to a work session followed by closed session to discuss the status of negotiated contract matters. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmens?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubik?
Yes.
All right. We are adjourned from the council meeting. We'll move right directly into our work session portion. Okay, number one, a request from Greg Carroll with Harrier Track Club to hold a five K on July fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
So this is their annual event. They've been doing it for decades. It, it follows the road as usual from the west side of the park over to the east side and back. Again, it's one of the, about four that are on the road, um, due to just the volume of people that participate in it. But, uh, we've never had any issues. We expect it on the fourth of July as part of the calendar of events.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Bach regarding this? Nope. Any objections to moving this one forward? Okay, we will move this one forward to the next council meeting. Number two, review of a task order, number twenty-one with Bartlett and West regarding entryway signage.
So this is for the scope of services to identify some different levels of signage that are potential and some possible locations and present that to the council for review. Uh, it has been to tourism and tourism committee reviewed and agreed to, it could be funded out of the capital improvement project of the tourism fund. And so moving forward to council for your consideration.
Very good. Uh, any questions?
I've got one.
Yeah.
Um, Tom, I know that we're outsourcing some design and all that, but has it been communicated, you know, kind of what we're expecting, that, you know, we want something more than what, what we might expect to see in Moberly or, I mean, I think the idea is to have something pretty nice. And I don't want to be limited by somebody else's.
No.
Thinking.
So I, I said, uh, word for word, I said, you know, Fallon would, would set that kind of their entryway as the gold standard of what we'd possibly like to see, you know, down to something that would be more traditional, like, you know, for smaller communities to see something more than we have. We don't want just a sign by the side of the road that says Moberly on it. So that's what they're gonna present is, and they're, I, I expect her to give me some examples of different ones and to kind of have like, maybe like a, let's say gold standard, silver and, and bronze, you know, whatever. So get, that way you can see ideas and then have some cost. And once we kind of narrow that down as far as the window we want to try and participate in, then we can start narrowing down the design for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Any objections to moving that forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move that one forward. Number three, authorizing the city manager to sign a NAP local government certification form for the Fourth Street Theater, Inc.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an informational item. This will not be on the following meeting unless, um, you know, barring any unforeseen circumstances. Um, the Fourth Street Theater approached me. They would like to apply for Neighborhood Assistance Program tax credits, NAP, NAP. Um, there is, as part of that, the local government authority, which is the city manager in Moberly, needs to sign a, uh, form basically saying that the entity is in good standing with local ordinances and land use planning. Um, it is within the authority of the city manager to sign that, but just as a matter of practice, we bring that to council and inform you guys that this signature is going off to the state. So, um, it's before you all today, uh, just to talk about if there's any questions or concerns about that. Um, and if there are none, I will sign it and it won't be on the next meeting at that point.
It's a great idea. That's really good. Uh, any questions for Mr. Bogowski? Any objections? Well, we won't be moving it forward, but I guess it, any questions at all? Okay. Free to go, buddy. Thank you. Let's see. Number four, proposals from the Tourism Advisory Commission for the following sponsorship to the Chamber of Commerce Junk Junction fifteen-hundred, the Christmas Festival one thousand, and Ro, uh, Moberly Rotary Club Railroad Days one thousand and two thousand.
Yes, the Tourism Advisory Commission met, um, and made a few recommendations to the council of spending some money, uh, sponsorship with Chamber of Commerce for Junk Junction of fifteen-hundred, one thousand on the Christmas Festival. The two different ones for the Rotary Club, so the one thousand is the event sponsorship of Railroad Days. The two thousand dollars is for the Rotary Club to purchase additional picnic tables. Um, so that's out of the capital improvement bucket of the Tourism Advisory Commission. Uh, that would be, um, an investment kind of at the longer term of the event of some additional picnic tables down there.
So would those picnic tables only be, belong to the Rotary Club or would they be for use for other events or, or how would that? How would that play out?
They'd probably, they would be used like for at the, that's one thing we gotta work out with Troy too, because they've got like capacity limitations over there. So they would be used, I would say, and I, I don't know if you made contact with it or not, that was a question asked today, would they be moved and stored possibly at the Fennel and be able to be moved over there for those type of events? But they would be like exclusive, like, were those two, like locations as needed? So I, I.
That would be nice, because there, I know there's often times at the Fennel that we do sometimes need additional picnic tables. Um, I'd say if, if, if the city's paying for them, I, why couldn't anyone else use them as well? I don't know how you all feel about that.
It's a, it's a fifty-fifty split on that. So, I mean, it's.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's not, we're not buying them exclusively, but, you know, that would be part of the criteria is they wouldn't, you know, they would be.
I see.
At those facilities.
I see. Okay. Well, I can't think of, anybody have any other questions?
Would they be using those, I mean, for other events or, I mean, is it property of Rotary? I just wonder if that's something that should be asked, uh, what they expect.
I think you're, have you talked to him yet, Troy? Okay, so what I understood was that they have, the tables they have there now, these are heavier industrial table. They're the aluminum or heavier frames than the plastic ones that they used to have. Like, we had several of the plastic ones that were like leftovers, I mean, from the first buy over there that are moved to the Fennel and they don't, they're not holding up real well. So I think that the tables that Parks has there now is the capacity of what the building will hold, but these would be some additional ones that could go out under the tent when they have the drink tent and things like that. In the off times when they don't need them under the canopy, it could be over at the Fennel. That's kind of how I understand that's going to work. We'll make sure to get, uh, firm clarification from the Rotary Club about what their expectations are about this before you all have to vote at the next meeting. We'll have that answer to you.
That would, that would be nice to be able to use them for other things if, if that were possible.
Not a problem.
Any, any additional questions? Any objections to moving that one forward? Okay, we'll move that one forward to the next council meeting. Number five, an ordinance repealing, I'm sorry, repealing ordinance nine-seven-nine-zero and terminating cooperative agreements with J. Madison Development for infill development.
So this was a group that has been doing a lot of houses on Concanon. They've had really good success and were moving a lot of houses down the line. And, uh, just, I think that they had some things change in their program and they've had to pull back a little bit. So we have other developers that are interested in moving on those. So we've been peeling any of them back that they're not moving on as quickly as we'd like to see. So they either came in and signed this back over to us and I think we'll see some other development on that soon. And they, they still want to build in the community, but they might be a little bit before they get going again.
Okay, okay.
I just wanted to add that the way those agreements are written for infill development, uh, after we give them a deed, we give them a quitclaim deed and they're supposed to begin the construction process. And if they default, uh, in the contract and don't complete the construction, that we have a deed signed by them, we keep in the file in the event of that. And so then we record that deed so the property comes back to the city. So Tom will be able to make it available to other contractors.
Did we keep their thousand dollars?
I think that they paid this a thousand. We, they forfeit the thousand.
You forfeit the thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
We had some in early on and that's wasn't, they weren't all done like that. So, I mean, we've been putting a thousand on all of them going forward. And I've told them, any future agreements, we have the thousand dollars when they sign the agreement.
Good, good. Any questions from council? Any objections to moving that forward? Okay, we will move that one forward. Uh, last one, number six, a request from Stewart Custom Homes to build infill housing on a city lot at eight-twelve West Reed Street.
A single family infill. So, you know, you've seen several homes like this and so we've had good success with this builder, so.
Yep. Okay, any questions from council? Any objections for moving this one forward? Okay. Well, that concludes the work session. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.